Property located on the south side of Russell Street assesses map 10A. It's by the Valley Development Corporation, proposing the redevelopment of existing 29,230 square foot hotel into 50 affordable permanent supportive housing apartments plus one resident manager apartment, as I said at 329 Russell Street. Do we have somewhere from Valley Development? You guys here? So I guess just to get things started, what we're going to do is we're going to have the applicant make a presentation for the project, then we will take questions from the board, comments from the board. Then we're going to open it up to, as part of the chapter 40B process, we take input from other boards in town, so we're going to open it up to questions and comments from the other, anyone who's here from other boards in town, and then if there's time after that, we will open it up for public comment. If we don't have time to make it through public comments, we, you know, we'll continue the hearing and have public comments at a later date. So, and that makes sense?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Elisa Mead, Town Council.
Okay.
I just, was the board going to have a discussion this evening related to the Safe Harbor?
We were going to do the Safe Harbor, should we start with that? Do you recommend?
I think either begin with that or after the initial presentation, but before comments. So, but I do think the board needs to address that this evening.
We can start with that, I guess, before we get into the details of it. For those of you who don't know, as a, as part of the 40B process, 40B is a, as an affordable housing statute, that's a state statute, and as part of that process, there is a goal that the state has set up 10% for your housing inventory to be followed to the affordable criteria. We are currently at 12 and a half percent as a town, roughly 12 and a half percent. So we are above the 10%. So we have the ability to, uh, to notify the applicant that we are in the Safe Harbor and that we do not have to accept the application for the affordable housing. So have any discussion about that? Do you have any questions about that? Our two options are three options. We could not, we could not exercise the Safe Harbor and let them make the presentation and then, you know, they would, you wouldn't be able to reject it under the Safe Harbor criteria. We can exercise Safe Harbor and reserve our right to reject, and that would allow us to put conditions on the project. We can exercise the Safe Harbor and deny the project because we're above the 10%. I think at this point, I think it makes sense, we're going to let them make the presentation and take public comment. My, my, my feeling is I think we should exercise the Safe Harbor and allow them to make the presentation, then we can decide at the end of the hearing tonight whether we want to move forward with the process or whether we want to deny the project.
And that would be a motion to invoke Safe Harbor?
Yes, a motion to declare Safe Harbor and, and then, but allow them to make the presentation.
So I'll make a motion to declare Safe Harbor?
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just, just as a matter of process, Mr. Chair and members of the board. So what would happen is at the end of the meeting, you can vote to authorize the chair, if that's the direction you're going to go in, to send notice to DHCD and to the applicant that you potentially want to proceed, but that you would invoke your rights of Safe Harbor.
Or, or we would vote at the end of the hearing to deny the application under Safe Harbor?
Correct.
So this will serve as the notification either way, and then we will, we would follow up with an official notification at the end of the, we need to provide notification within 15 days of the hearing if we're going to invoke Safe Harbor, right?
That's right. And actually, you wouldn't actually deny tonight, you would do that at your next, at your next meeting because you would have to get DHCD to approve that you in fact are in Safe Harbor. But you would, you need to notify DHCD this evening and the applicant.
Okay, so either way, we, we're going to notify about Safe Harbor and then we'll make a decision at the end of this on whether we want to notify them that we're doing Safe Harbor with a denial or Safe Harbor with a decision to move forward.
Correct.
Hey. We have some from Valley Development. Are you, are you guys on the Zoom to do, to do a PowerPoint?
I am, but I need to go to the chat.
Alex, are you able to give her a screen sharing permission to make, to do a PowerPoint on there?
Uh, that's not me, that'd be Jennifer. And then she could, over at the end of the table, that we can get her audio and cameras.
I think we just speak first, I'll go down and then.
Yeah.
And then, Mr. Chair, I guess, when that's what that's happening, could you just announce who the board members are who will be sitting on this application?
Sure, I'm the Chair of the Board, Andrew Bombadere. This is Jason Galvin, and this is Jason Bahandowitz. He, I don't know if it matters, but procedurally, Jason's an alternate sitting in on the, on the hearing.
Bahandowitz.
Bahandowitz. I don't, we had a member recuse themselves, I'm not sure of the matter of procedure if we need to declare that, but Linda Ladue recused herself from the hearing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know if I'm on.
You are.
Okay, awesome. So my name is Laura Baker, I work at the Valley Community Development Corporation. I'm the Real Estate Development Director there. Joining me tonight is Alexis Wrightmiker down at the end, she's our Executive Director. And actually, on our Zoom, one of the participants in the Zoom is Felicity Hardie, who's our council. So we're here tonight to present an application under, as we've talked about, chapter 40B, which is an affordable housing statute at the state level. It allows an applicant such as ourselves to ask permission to waive local zoning, any local zoning by law or regulation for the purpose of creating affordable housing. And as we'll see in this presentation tonight, we are requesting essentially one waiver, which is permission to create a residential use within an industrial zone. So 40B application, Econo-Lodge redevelopment, it's at 329 Russell Street, that's right, the one right in front of the Hampshire Mall, and we're here tonight. Next slide. This is the location of the hotel, I'm presuming most of you here tonight are very familiar with this location. It's kind of the red balloon there in the middle, what you see behind it is the parking for the mall, that's right next to it is, there's a Dunkin' Donuts, a nail salon, a Jiffy Lube, it's roughly across Route 9 from the stables. Next slide. This is what it looks like from the front as you're passing it on Route 9, and also we have a shot of what the building looks like from the rear. Next slide. This is a typical room in the hotel, the rooms are fairly standardized, I don't know how many folks here have stayed at the Econo-Lodge, but pretty standard double, double occupancy rooms. Each room is equipped with its own bathroom, every room has a double window, and every room has its own heating and cooling unit. Next. So what we wanted to do is just tell us a little bit about who's involved in this. So the owner of the hotel property currently at 329 is 329 Hadley LLC. This is a sole purpose LLC, which means limited liability company, that's 100% owned by the developer, and so Valley Community Development Corporation is the developer. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We've been working in the valley since 1988. One of our core functions is to develop affordable housing, and we own properties in Amherst as well as in Northampton and East Hampton. We typically need to set up an LLC, it really is for lenders so that we shield the property from any other liabilities of our corporation. We hire a third-party property manager called Housing Management Resources. They have a specialty in managing affordable housing, they manage all of our other owned rental properties. The architect that we're working with is Austin Design Cooperative, they're based in Greenfield in Rattleboro, and I mentioned our attorney Felicity Hardie, who's from Amherst, who's on our Zoom call with us tonight. Next slide. So this is kind of, in a nutshell, what we've been talking with the different boards and committees in town about for, I don't know, it feels like about the last nine or 10 months. To basically renovate the existing hotel to create a total of 51 apartments, 50 would be rented to tenants, and one would be for a live-in resident manager who would be basically serving as a support person and kind of eyes and ears on the property during the overnight hours. We would combine 24 of the existing rooms, there are 63 double occupancy rooms in the hotel now, so we would combine 24 of those to create 12 one-bedroom apartments with kitchens, and we would change 39 existing rooms to studios by adding kitchens to those rooms which already have full bath. And then as budget permits, we're hoping to add solar panels on the main hotel and on the storage facility which is located behind the hotel. Next slide. So a lot of what's there, we're not proposing to change. Particularly the site itself. So we are not proposing any changes to the existing site layout, the lighting, the landscaping, the dumpster, the utilities, the parking, the way that cars travel in and out of the property, the signage will either reuse or, or potentially remove, we're not going to add any additional signage. And in terms of the exterior of the building, what you see as you're going by, it should look the same, the Econo-Lodge signs are gone, and we'll do some minor cosmetic repairs that are needed on the exterior of the building. But overall, the building and the site are in relatively good condition. Next slide. So this building, some people here probably remember, was newly constructed in 2003. So it's a 20-year-old building, which for us is wonderful. We often work with antique buildings that don't have modern safety features. So this building has current life safety features, it has sprinklers, it has hardwired smoke detectors and a fire alarm, automated fire alarm system, which is a big plus. The building is also fully handicapped accessible, so you can enter in the wheelchair ungrade, there's a working elevator in the building, there are nice wide corridors and doorways. It has modern HVAC system, which is heating and cooling system, including new heat pump mini splits that were installed in 2021. So it is a highly functional, relatively modern building. Next slide. So the current density at the property is 63 double occupancy rooms, so 126-person maximum capacity for people staying in the hotel. We are proposing to make it less dense and have 51 apartments, which would have a 63-person maximum capacity, if you assume that each of the one-bedrooms has two people, a couple, which we don't actually anticipate, so it will probably have an occupancy somewhere between 50 people and 63 people. Folks may know that the most recent use of the Econo-Lodge was rental to UMass, which did have double occupancy, it had 126 students living there, and then as the semester went along, they gradually moved them back onto the campus, until now currently the property is vacant. Next. So the goal of this work, this conversion, is primarily to provide housing for single adults and some two-person households, to have 33 apartments for folks who have very low incomes, and 25 of these would have a preference for people who don't have current housing. 17 apartments for kind of moderate working wage tenants, and then the one resident manager unit which would have no income cap on it. So I would say that we're really focused on two, two different populations, one is people who need housing who don't have housing, and the other is low-wage workers or part-time workers. One of the things that has had, I think, some residents, when we've talked with people in town, is the fact that there are so many employment opportunities right around the hotel that will pay kind of entry-level, service-level wages, and that people working in those jobs chances are can't afford an apartment in Hadley or Amherst or Northampton. So that was part of our motivation. All of these apartments can qualify as affordable housing and listed on the state subsidized housing inventory. That is the document that was mentioned earlier where the state's looking for towns to have 10% or more, and Hadley is coming in at 12.5%. When we spoke with the planning board early on about this project, one of the things in favor of it was they recognized that some of the properties currently on the state subsidized housing inventory are due to come off, so that affordability can be for a period of time, and then properties can come off the subsidized housing inventory. In this case, state funders would require a minimum of 30 years of affordability, which means rents have to be kept low, people have to be income-eligible for at least 30 years. In many of our properties, we will have longer periods of affordability, sometimes that is an negotiation with the town. The town might say, we want 50 years, or we want even 99 years, if we invest and, and give you the permission to have these units, we want to maintain them for a long, very long period of time. Next. So during the course of kind of thinking about this project and planning it, we have been around town a bit, meeting with different boards and committees, so we met with the Housing and Economic Development Committee, the Planning Board, several times with the Select Board, the Committee for Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, and we met with the Development Team, which is a group that meets, I think, weekly, the Building Inspector, Fire Chief, Police Chief, DPW Director, the ZBA and Planning Board Chairs. And it's where you can, it's almost like a tech review meeting, you can go in and propose your project, and if any of the department heads have questions or concerns, you can address them before you get to a point like this where you're actually asking for an application for a permit. Next. Again, this is the one zoning waiver request that we identified after looking at the bylaw that we would need. We've worked on a number of applications for 40B, usually there's a long waiver list because we're building something new. In this case, because this is an existing site, there really are not many waivers to be considered. Really, the only one is to allow multifamily use in a zone where it isn't typically permitted. Next. Uh, this is hard to see, so if people have questions about the site plan, we'll probably go to another version and try to zoom in on it because it's a little small, but what this is showing you is, is on the left, you see the driveway into the mall, and then you see the property, you see parking lots in front and by the side, you see a large new, this was at the time it was being proposed to be built, structure in the middle, and then behind it, you can see additional potential parking as well as the storage units. So we provided the board with what's called an existing utility capacity memorandum from a civil engineer, so they looked at basically, are the utilities on the site adequate for the use that we're proposing? So they looked at sewer water, electricity and stormwater. They determined that the change of use would result in reduced daily flow of sewer and reduced use of water, which is really based on occupancy, because the 126 people is more than the potential 50 to 63 people that we would have in the building. Electricity, expecting to reuse the existing service with the transformer in its current location, and the patterns of stormwater would stay unchanged because we're not proposing any changes to the site plan, to the amount of parking, the area of the parking, area of catch basins, et cetera. Next. So we also had them look a little bit at traffic impacts. One comment they made is that the traffic impacts are quote minimal compared to surrounding uses, this is a, this is a heavily trafficked road, as, as you know, with a lot of people coming and going from malls and the different stores. So essentially, they assessed that the trip generation, which is the number of trips coming and going, going from this particular property, would be reduced from its current or previous use as a hotel. So they determined that because there'll be fewer people living there, trip generation counts are typically higher for hotels than for residential, and many of the tenants that we are proposing to serve will not own a vehicle, they simply won't be able to afford one. And we'll use other modes of transportation like the PBTA bus and the bike trail. So this hotel has bus access pretty much directly in front of the hotel, and then if you cross Route 9 on the other side, there's also a bus shelter there, and then the rail trail picks up right behind the mall. The site has 70 paved parking spaces now, which equals 1.4 spaces per unit. There's also an area for 57 unpaved parking spaces that are down kind of near where the storage areas are, for a total potential capacity of 2.3 spaces per unit. What we find in our other rental housing is that we run about 0.3 to 0.6 spaces per unit in terms of demand from our tenants. So it, it's clear to us that there's ample parking for the tenants and staff and visitors who might come to visit people who are living there. So this is a quick look at, you know, these are two different configurations, one is kind of a standard room and one is a handicapped accessible room. Currently, the hotel has a number of accessible rooms, we would plan to have four fully handicapped accessible rooms for tenants, two studios and two one-bedrooms. And you can see on the left is the typical unit, essentially, we're adding a run of kitchen, it will be a fully functional kitchen, a range, you know, stove top, oven, sink, refrigerator, and then the bathroom is existing. Next. Typical one-bedroom, essentially kind of creating a passageway between two rooms, so that one room can serve as a kitchen kind of living area, and the other room connected to the bathroom can serve as a bedroom. The studios were around 257 square feet, and the one-bedrooms are around 514 square feet. So they're modest, these are modest apartments. We expect to provide indoor common areas, so currently the hotel's a pool, we would eliminate the pool and use that kind of large space as a community room. We would have several offices there, we would have some flex spaces for classrooms or computer rooms and a shared laundry room. Next. And so staffing, one of the questions we get a lot at a zoning hearing like this is, you know, supervision and staffing on site, given the tenant population, and so what we're looking at for this property is again to have a live-in person who's there overnights, to have a full-time daytime resident services coordinator, this person is not a clinician necessarily, but they're, they're kind of whatever you need staffer, probably with a social work background, who will help connect tenants with whatever services they might need, whether they're vocational, transportation, you know, whatever it is that they need to connect with in our region, which is pretty rich in human service providers. We'd expect to have a full-time property manager and part-time maintenance staff on site, and there is an on-call overnight crisis service provider that serves the region, not just this property. Next. Just again, a recap of our property management company, they're called Housing Management Resources, they manage over 8,000 apartments, they do a lot of affordable housing management, and we know them well because they manage all of our other current rental properties. Next. So another question that comes up pretty frequently at zoning hearings is, how will we as the, you know, owners of this property make sure that it's in good condition and that it doesn't get rundown or in disrepair over years, over the years? So the management company, because they'll have staff on site, they will be doing cleaning, they'll be doing routine repairs, and they'll contract out for services like trash plowing, landscaping. We will seed a capital replacement fund, so when we do the renovation work, we'll put money aside into a capital replacement fund, and then every year we'll add to it so that the roof is actually new, but when it needs to be replaced in 20 or 30 years, we'll have accrued enough funds to do that. And this protects against having a property that becomes rundown over time. Next. So our timeline was to acquire the property, which, which happened in January, to come here, do this zoning review and permitting process in February, March, if we are approved, to move forward in April and May to advance plans and fine-tune our budgets, and in June, apply for state financing, which is where the majority of the money would come from, both for the acquisition of the property as well as the renovations. Potentially close on this financing in November, and undertake renovations in late fall to spring of 2023 to 2024, lease up in 2024. And this is really kind of a best-case timeline, if everything clicks into place, obviously we'll see what happens tonight, we'll hear what kind of questions or comments people have. Next. That's it. So we are very interested in hearing people's comments and questions.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do, we're gonna do the board first, then we're gonna do any, any other board members, and then, then we'll do public questions. So I had a, I had a couple of questions, I guess, also as a, I don't know, I guess we'll start with, I've received some documentation from people that was sent directly to me, there was a, there was a petition that I'll read that is, was signed by 45 people, 45 or so people in town, that's a petition against the redevelopment of the property. The petition says, "A well-funded real estate developer, Valley CDC, wants to purchase a Route 9 Hadley Hotel, convert it to permanent housing for homeless and lower no-income individuals, has plans for additional projects, forever altering the business corridor that has supported the town's tax base and protected our residential neighborhoods for decades. This change would require special zoning board approval and a deed restriction, opening the door to other apartment developers, converting businesses to nonprofit developments will destroy the town's tax base. Hadley already does more than its fair share to support affordable housing efforts, in fact, had these well over its required percentage per state guidelines. As a town, we have gone above and beyond to support low-income individuals, will continue to do so, but destroying our tax base would have long-term consequences on our public safety, schools and other local services. And that a major shift in our business and cultural outlook should be decided through a deliberative process and town meeting, not by a few members of an appointed board, the zoning board and any other board this comes before should reject this development." We also received a letter from the Finance Committee, I don't, has anyone from the Finance Committee want to speak to the letter that you guys submitted?
You want me to read it off?
Sure.
The microphone's up here.
So I just wrote this up based on our February 16th, 2023 Finance Committee meeting. It says, "At the February 16th, 2023 Finance Committee meeting, members unanimously agreed to send this letter to the zoning board of appeals regarding some areas of concern and unanswered questions which may have financial ramifications for the town of Hadley due to the proposed Econo-Lodge location zoning change request. One is potential lost revenue because of the proposed use versus the current hotel business. Two, the need to study the financial impact of potential added costs to the town versus current or other possible uses for the property. Three, does the proposed use serve the highest priority group of residents currently residing in town, such as seniors, which are approximately 19.5% of our population, versus the 6.3% that are under the poverty level? Or would any potential added cost be as a result of bringing non-residents into town? Police, fire and ambulance financial impacts because of increased manpower needs, increased equipment needs, et cetera? We have been repeatedly told by our chiefs that manpower as it stands now is just barely meeting demands. What would be the additional cost to these departments? Submitted, respectfully submitted on behalf of the Finance Committee members."
Thank you. Isn't, we will speak to the, the public records one later. There's a public records request that a group of people put together also with about police calls to the hotels in town, but we can, we'll discuss, discuss that as part of the other board input. Some of my questions, some of the questions I just had while listening to the, for the presentation, the, are the people going to sign like official leases as part of the program? Is it, is this an overall program, are these people enrolled like in a program with Valley Development Corporation?
No, so this is, this is primarily housing for folks that may need some extra services to be successful in that housing. So yes, everybody who comes in goes through a screen. goes through a screening process. We do a query check. We do landlord references. We do credit references, just like you would with any apartment. Um, and so if you're approved for an apartment, you would sign a one-year lease. You would get to renew that lease year after year, as long as you were not in violation of the lease. Um, if you are in violation of lease or don't pay your rent, you can be evicted, just like any other type of um housing, apartment housing.
And what are your thresholds for those applications? Like if you don't pass your query or? If that's you.
So it depends. We we have some discretion in evaluating queries. Um, there are certain things that the federal government says, if someone, this pops up on someone's query, you can't have them. Arson is one, production of methylphenidates is another. Um. Any kind of violent activity harmed towards others is something that would raise a red flag to us. Um, but if you had a, like a non-payment of child support or something like that, we wouldn't, you know, we would look at your current situation.
Okay.
Um, so there is some discretion in looking at the queries.
Okay, because this building is next to a a school. So there'll be no kind of anybody that wouldn't pass the query for, say, not being allowed within a hundred feet of the school or something like that, wouldn't be allowed to house there?
Yeah, I don't know for within a hundred feet of it, but um, yes, so we're looking for folks that are gonna be good neighbors. Uh, for everybody, as well as the other people in the building. I I would just comment that we've owned a a property that houses similar folks, homeless and very, very low-income folks in Northampton. We owned it for about thirty years. It butts the Bridge Street Elementary School. Um, and it has for thirty years and we did an expansion, a pretty major expansion on that building a few years ago. We went to talk with the school principal and she didn't know where we were. She didn't know which building it was. So it really had never, and this was like their fence, the kids were throwing balls over. It was right against the elementary school. So we do not see our tenants as posing any kind of risk for schoolchildren whatsoever.
The services, um, are the ser- uh, so again, so this is just primarily housing. So the services are voluntary services. They're not?
Correct. They are voluntary services.
Is this through DHCD?
Yes.
And DHCD will be providing financing as well?
Yes.
To the tune of how much?
About twelve million dollars.
And that's for running maintenance staffing?
So essentially, we look at two kinds of budgets that that what we're doing now is you know, we'd be applying for the money for the development, which includes acquisition financing, the renovations that are needed, the legal work that's needed to kind of get the property up and running. And then we have an operating budget that's based primarily on the rents. So in this case, we'll have below-market rents for people who are in that kind of middle working class range. Um, and we anticipate having rental subsidies for folks who are very low income. So if you make ten thousand dollars a year, you can't afford market rate rent or even below-market rate rent. You'd pay a third of your income toward the rent and the subsidy would pay the rest. And like all of our properties, pretty much, they're, the attempt is to be self-supporting with them. Um, so that the rental income comes in and supports the cost of operating the project.
What are the rental ranges for the, say, the studio to the one bedroom?
I could have those here.
Department of Housing and Community Development, I believe? Yes.
That is what it is. Oh, I'm writing on it. So uh, the sixty percent rents, which are these kind of middle-tier rents uh, right now, and they change every year, they get updated, are nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for an efficiency, including all utilities. One thousand fifty-nine dollars for one bedroom, including all utilities. Um, and again, if you have, if you're low enough income and have a a unit with a subsidy attached to it, then you would, your rent would float based on your income. If your income went up, you'd pay more rent. If your income went down, you'd pay less rent.
And utilities, is this heat, electricity, cable, internet?
Yeah, in this case, we would include all utilities uh in the rent, uh, so that is heat, air conditioning, plug-in electric, the building has wifi, really everything but um like cable television and and phone.
Okay. But each unit is individually wired for those cable and phone access independently of each other?
Yeah, they were at a hotel. So yeah, they are wired.
Could uh, could there be children living in the building?
Um, it's possible. We don't think it's likely. I mean, we can't discriminate against people based on their household composition or size. Um, but it's not it's not the population we anticipate is mostly going to live in the property. We think it's going to be single adults, especially in the efficiencies are really sized for one person. Um, we wanted to have one bedrooms so that we could accommodate couples as well.
And these residents have to have employment? Or actively seeking employment?
So if you're in, if you have to come up with nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars or a thousand fifty-nine dollars a month, you have to have a source of income. So you could be a veteran and you could have veterans benefits. You could be retired and have a pension or you could be working and have employment income. Uh, we serve all those folks. We serve rich veterans. We serve a lot of retirees who can't afford market rate housing. Um, as well as folks on disability, as well as a lot of people just working minimum wage jobs who cannot live in our region because rents are so expensive.
So whether it be from work or what have you, um, there is in income?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
What um? With with uh twenty-five of the units being set aside for current, I know currently homeless people or previous, like recently homeless people like saying that you need to have a job and everyone's going to be paying somebody to stay there. Like how would, how does that process work?
So I I think I I just want to take one second to say that a lot of people fall into the category of of being unhoused or homeless and it might be different than what your associations are. So it could be someone who's living in a situation of domestic violence is homeless. Someone who's living in a place that's closing or unsafe. So which was it? Was it the Amherst? There was an Amherst hotel just down the road that closed and they built Aspen Heights. That was an example of people. Everybody who lived there was considered homeless because their housing was being removed through no fault of their own. Um, folks going through divorce often pass through our doors. Um, and you could have someone who's who has SSI because they have a disability who doesn't, again, there are a lot of people working. What's surprising from the shelter providers is how many people in shelter go to work during the day and then go to shelter at night. It is common that people go to work during the day and go to a shelter at night because their job doesn't pay them enough to have an apartment. And these are the very kinds of jobs, I think, that there are so many of right along this Route Nine corridor.
Um, do you have any plans of outreach to those potential employers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you tell me a little more about that?
So we're, we're, we're a ways away from doing that.
Right.
So it's not a formal plan, but we would be reaching out to any kind of business associations in the area. We would be reaching out to all the business owners who operate in proximity in both of the malls and the other stores along the Route Nine Strip. Um, we would flyer those stores. We would ask if they have employee newsletters that we could post our um listings in. That is a main part of why this location made sense to us. Um, because there's so many people working, right? There's such a concentration of low-wage workers right in this area who are commuting from other places, who would love to live in Hadley, but they can't find anything they can afford.
Are there um? Are there lease restrictions on like the number of people that that they would be in the unit, like please?
Yes.
Efficiencies are meant for one person, like the lease lease says you can't have someone else stay with you.
So yeah, absolutely. Just like any apartment would have lease restrictions. If you, if you have an apartment that's large enough for another person, you'd still have to have that person would have to be screened and accepted by the landlord to move in. Um, in some places, we have restrictions on overnight guests. Um, in other places, we don't. Um, but you can't have someone move in. Usually there is some kind of, whether it's two weeks or three days, we have different different patterns in different places, but there's some restriction on how long you can have a house guest stay overnight.
Is there any uh comparable metrics on like the crisis providers, like you mentioned, the on-call piece of it? Um, so they're not onsite for that. It's a, it's an on-call kind of a service that
Right.
Somebody has to call to.
Yeah.
Is it going to be the one person on site that's managing the property or is it going to be individuals? There's a problem.
So.
For me, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
You know, issues resolution.
Right. I know.
SLA kind of mindset.
You know, it's interesting when we, we have a property under construction in Amherst. Folks might have read about it in the paper. It's at one thirty-two Northampton Road. Um, as a consequence of the permitting for that project, also in a safe harbor community, um, we did a lot of looks at police logs, um, both for existing properties, for comparable properties. Um, we looked at the Amherst College, um, at the college call logs for campus police. Um, and we found that the call rates out of our properties were higher, but not dramatically higher. Um, we also don't have onsite staff. We have smaller buildings and so we don't have the revenue to have onsite staff. Our um, understanding from other providers who have onsite staff is you're able to catch many of the nine-one-one calls before they go out the door. So when we look at police logs from other similar rental properties, a lot of the calls are not true emergencies. I mean, that's true of nine-one-one in general. But we have people call i- if they can't find something or someone's making noise in the building and the purpose of having onsite staff is all of those kinds of issues that are truly not emergencies would get handled in-house. Um, there will still be nine-one-one calls, um, just like there were when it was rented to the UMass or when it was a hotel.
And that site resident person will be trained in that kind of interaction with residents?
Mm-hmm.
And is is one person enough for the quantity of people that might be in there?
Yeah.
And I guess really right from a um, a percentage standpoint, it seems.
It's a great question, honestly. It's one we grapple with all the time. Um, I think between having a full-time property manager on site plus a full-time resident services coordinator will be able to handle most things that come up. I mean, you end up having, just like life, society in general, you may have a few people who have a lot of issues and then almost everything else has no issues and doesn't demand any of that person's time. So.
With these services being voluntary, so these are, are these some of like ancillary services? These aren't like ser- see, are the people that are you seeking out people that need services or are these services that are just like available for people that happen to be living there? I don't know if that, does that make sense?
We, we are.
Is that like a, is that like a criteria to get in that you need services or?
It is not. It's not a criteria to get in, but we know the nature of the populations that we're targeting. People will have needs. It, there's a reason people haven't been able to maintain housing in the past. And so instead of just putting a roof over someone's head and saying, here you go, now, now it's all good, right? Here's the key. Uh, we don't, we don't think that that's enough. We think that people need extra help um to maintain their tendencies.
But in terms of um, somebody being removed from the building is going to kind of just follow the general landlord tenant law. It's not a
Absolutely.
It's not like a, it's not, like you said, it's not a program where you're going to be kicking people out of the program.
Exactly. We can't make people go to therapy or do counseling or anything like that. What we would deal with just as any landlord would, our behaviors, usually what happens in our building is, is if there's a behavior, it's disruptive to other people living in the building. It's not a community problem, but someone's making noise at two AM. So that would be a lease violation. You get some warnings, you get people working with you. Ultimately, if you can't resolve that lease violation situation, you would, you would be evicted.
Who doesn't vet any of these people?
Yeah, so um, it yeah, so it goes through our property management company, Housing Management Resources. They're really seasoned at this. Um, so there, it starts with an application. Um, it includes references, whether it's landlord references, provider references. Um, it includes a query check that I mentioned, includes an interview uh with the staff. So it's a little more rigorous than probably a market rate landlord would do. Um, and then, you know, often people have referrals maybe from someone else who's known to the property manager. So we can, we can get some background that way as well.
Yes, I mean, you wanna um? I I have a letter from the uh the Committee on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion that I, I thought I printed out, but I just found on my phone. I don't know if there's anyone on the call uh from Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee or anyone here who wants to speak to that letter. Do you want me to read it or would you? Okay, uh, so the letter uh is, dear members of the Hadley Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, Chair and Jaba, dear Linda La Duke, Jason Galvin, Jason Bahonawis and John Kokoski. As the Hadley Committee on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, CDEI, we are writing to offer our perspective on the conversion of the Econ Lodge at three twenty-nine Russell Street to affordable housing. We, we offer our reflections within the context of the select board's charge to the CDEI in August twenty twenty to advise, promote and foster the development of policies, programs, activities directed towards anti-racism, diversity, equity and inclusion. Our perspective is informed by presentations and discussions in which we engaged over the last two years. Um, a joint meeting with the Housing and Economic Development Committee and presentation by Bill Dwyer on zoning in Hadley on nine August twenty twenty-one, two presentations by Valley CDC administrators Laura Baker and Alexis uh
Brightnecker.
Brightnecker, twenty-five October twenty twenty-two and eight December twenty twenty-two. These uh CDEI meeting discussions on seventeen, uh, sorry, three CDEI meeting discussions on seventeen November twenty twenty-two, nineteen January twenty twenty-three and sixteen February twenty twenty-three. In addition, several of our members participated in Hadley Learns Program on Housing on one April twenty twenty-one, six May twenty twenty-one, seventeen October twenty twenty-two, three November twenty twenty-two. Also, members attended an Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Zoom meeting in September twenty twenty-two and others reviewed articles on affordable housing and on local preference. In affordable housing, we support, strongly support the renovation of the Econ Lodge into fifty-one affordable housing units for five reasons. One, stable affordable housing is fundamental to the health of the individual and the community, including the economic health of the town. We anticipate no great difference to the tax base with this conversion from business to residential as Valley CDC will pay taxes on it. According to Hadley's master, uh, two, according to Hadley's master plan, twenty seventeen update, household size is decreasing while much of our existing stock is for larger households. This project uh addresses the most needed type of affordable housing designed for low-income, smaller, one-to-two-person households. Number three, this project provides needed housing right on the public bus route and within walking distance of jobs and services. Uh, number four, it also addresses the town's goal of providing housing while preserving open space and farmland. Number uh, number five, this project is in partnership with Valley CDC. We are confident in their ability to provide the administrative leadership, facility management and resident services that will result in a safe, comfortable and successful residential community. On the local preference, as the town considers the opportunity to request lottery prioritization for individuals with Hadley ties, residency, employment and/or children in school, we expressed our concern about pursuing the local preference option. We offer the following reflections. Uh, we offer the following reflections and recommendations for your consideration. We suggest the luck of the draw be given equal consideration. The luck of the draw is a widely accepted standard of fairness. Specifically, an open lottery without local preference offers fairness in that it provides an equal opportunity for all. We understand that a ha- that a number of Hadley residents may want local preference as it provides an opportunity to take care of individuals who have already made a commitment to the town through residency, employment and/or children in school. Offering even a small percentage of local preference may address this interest and increase public support. We want to emphasize that by giving preference to some, we would be limiting the opportunity for others and therefore perpetuating a system of inequity. Housing-like employment is a regional issue and not just a town-by-town concern. Not requesting local preference or requesting a small percentage makes Hadley a better neighbor to other towns. Further, a high local per- local preference in a predominantly white town like Hadley reduces the racial diversity in the lottery pool. This not only diminishes the opportunity to increase racial diversity in Hadley, but inadvertently perpetuates a racist housing system. Recent research on issues related to housing and equity has found that maintaining high local preference thresholds in housing developments contributes to greater access to housing for white tenants over tenants of color, potentially furthering racial inequality and housing discrimination. Predominantly, white cities and towns across the Commonwealth have examined this issue and have determined that foregoing the adoption of a local preference for a proposed affordable housing is one anti-racist action with immediate reach. We concur with this perspective and see this local preference decision as a concrete opportunity for Hadley to act on community values of openness, inclusion and justice in regards to who has access to housing. Consistent with our charge from the Select Board in twenty twenty to advise, promote and further the development of policies directed towards anti-racism, diversity, equity and inclusion, we recommend that the town of Hadley offer everyone who qualifies an equal opportunity. We urge the zoning board of appeals to select a zero to thirty percent local preference for the proposed housing project. Conclusion, the CDEI supports all programs and activities that can help increase the diversity of Hadley. Although this low-income housing project is one action that can help bring more diversity to our predominantly white town, we believe this is one action amongst many that would need to happen. There is more to be done. We need to create more places for people of color, of all economic and social statuses, along with events where we can mix, mingle and get to know each other in such an enjoyable way that this attracts others to Hadley. Not just because the pro- property taxes are low, but because we are a diversity welcoming community. Thank you very much for considering our input and for supporting affordable housing in Hadley. Respectfully, Mark Don, Chair, Wayne Abercrombie, Joanne Goding, Megan Rayland, Pat Rizmeyer and Sarah Strong, the Hadley Committee on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. So there's no other questions from our board right now. I will have to, if there's any other important here, it's board members. So there's no other questions from our board right now. I will have to, if there's any other board members here that would like to speak to anything, I know I see Randy from the Select Board. Or if there's anyone online that would like to, like to speak from planning board or any other town boards. Public, or Bill Dwyer. Uh, yeah. She come to either one of these microphones? Just have you state your name and the board you're on.
So Amy Biden and I'm the Chair on Finance Committee and I'm also on the Economic Development Committee. And I was a board member for almost ten years on Valley CDC. Valley CDC is an amazing organization. They're fabulous. My biggest thing is I am being the Chair of the Finance Committee, it is so important to look at town finances. Unfortunately, I don't see that this is, in my opinion, that this is, um, I guess, a good deal for the town. I don't see where the benefit is for the town's finances. I only see, um, as it is, we'll be losing about a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year in rooms tax. I don't see where, um, this is a benefit financially for the town. All I see right now is a strain on more of our services. So Route Nine brings a lot of, um, income to us. Um, so it keeps our taxes very, very low. And, um, changing into apartments, I don't necessarily think that is the right thing to do, especially at this meeting. I think that is something that the town needs to look at if you want to look at changing our bylaws. But, um, I think that Route Nine, um, gives us a lot of income and helps keep our taxes low. So in my opinion, I think that this is not the right move for Hadley. I do, I do support the ideas. I do like what they have to say. I originally supported the idea. When I was on the Economic, um, the Housing Committee, they said that they had support. I did vote yes in the very beginning. I have changed my mind since. Um, I thought we were in bigger jeopardy of losing our ten percent. I really did. And then I learned a lot more about it. And there is no immediate need, um, for, um, our, um, ten percent. So I feel that, um, we should not do this project. Thanks.
Bill Dwyer has a hand up. Bill?
Hi. I'm sorry, I have apparently a, uh, an intermittent connection here, so I hope this gets through. The planning board will have an agenda item at our next meeting, which will be, March seventh, uh, on whether we want to, uh, take a position on this. I just wanted to go on the record to let you know that.
When was that meeting, Bill? March seventh? Molly?
Uh, so I'm just going to speak as a representative from the Hadley Housing and Economic Development Committee. Um, I know Randy's there, so I'm, I'm assuming Randy's going to speak for the Select Board, but if not, um, I could certainly do that. You know, as Amy pointed out, we did have unanimous support on the Housing and Economic Development Committee. Our charge as a, as an advisory committee to the Select Board and, um, in many ways, the Planning Board is to promote these types of conversations. We don't have a town planner, so to the extent we can further conversations around the issues of housing as well as, um, development along, in particular, along the Britainine Corridor, that's what our committee's charged with. So, uh, we met with the folks from Valley CDC, um, multiple times. Many of the questions that were actually posed tonight, um, by the Finance Committee, I think were asked and answered satisfactorily. And I, you know, I think the general conversation that we had where, um, I would disagree slightly with what Amy said in terms of a sense of urgency is that these types of projects don't happen overnight and it's been, really kind of hammered into us that it's much easier to either try to retain existing stock or do kind of a multi-unit project like this suggests. So given the fact that it's an existing hotel, we've already lost that hotel revenue, so it's not that we're going to lose the, the room revenue by going to this project. That revenue has already stopped to the town. The seller, you know, made it clear that he did, he no longer wanted it to be a hotel, nor does he want anyone else to run it as a hotel. So I just wanted to make, make that clear. And, you know, there is housing stock and I think probably the planning board will be talking about that, uh, when they meet. But there is housing stock that is coming off now, um, basically in the month of March, which is the Mountain View. We would still be over the threshold, even if we lose those units. But then the next big, uh, it's, uh, Vesta, I believe it's, well, we still call it Winfield, but I believe it's called Vesta now. That inventory is actually, um, in part, uh, potentially coming off. And even though that's not for several years away, it would indeed put us at risk for an unfriendly forty B at that point in time. And I know, you know, five or six years down the road may seem far, far away, but in the absence of something like this, that could plug and put us in a, in much better solid footing. I think it would give, it would buy the town time. And ultimately, in the long run, uh, cost the town less. So, uh, given the location, given the ease of the transition, um, that's why our committee supported it. And again, you know, we did have conversations with police, fire and the like, and we were satisfied that this would not pose an undue burden to the town, um, from a financial standpoint.
Thank you. Dr. T.
Dr. T.
Well, if you come up here, yeah. People in line can hear you. First of all, this is a basic question. Is this a friendly forty B? A friendly forty B means we still have the option without the club over our head, like if we did not have ten percent of our zoning as affordable, as you mentioned, uh, twelve point, uh, twelve and a half percent now. But this is the highest in the valley, actually, when we would consider many towns, even our neighboring Northampton and Amherst, just barely creep over ten percent. Sunderland had one percent, but they're putting up some new apartments. South Hadley has four percent. Attill has two percent. We have done our share. And number two, uh, the fact that some of these are affordable units are supposedly coming off the affordable limits. There is a court case pending, uh, in Eastern Mass, I want to say, uh, Sitewit or Cohastet, one of those towns. That if the underlying zoning does not permit apartments, they are not allowed the gold market rate. For example, uh, if this were allowed, then all of a sudden it thirty years expired. It would have to be a zone change that allowed multi-unit apartments. So this is kind of a straw man that people keep throwing up. Well, we're going to come off these numbers pretty soon. That court case is going to be a significant impact on many, many towns. So that's something to be aware of. Sunderland has a friendly forty B. They did a town survey. The town survey said primarily people sixteen and older should be the ones that are really needing them. For example, they probably can't work in with inflation. Many people are, have to work a little harder trying to make their ends meet. So they had a age limit, sixty and over. They also had it in perpetuity, not thirty years, but forever. So if we ever have our, our, our backs to the wall, then we can put out requests for proposals. Who's going to make the best proposal to the town that will make the most economic sense? Right now, we're only proceeding with one. So if people are so inclined to have more affordable housing, the Select Board can put out a request for proposal and Sunderland has a, a great one. If, uh, and it, it does spell out every step of the way and I don't think there's any significant negative impact for the town of Sunderland. What are the other points? Yeah, only thirty years, uh, that's, that should be in perpetuity. And coming off the rolls and some people say, well, how did this ever become industrial? I don't, I'll give a little bit of a history. When the mall, Mount LeFarnsworth Mall became known as the Dead Mall, there was concerns that we were going to not have like significant economic input like we all anticipated. So there are several incubator companies come, came before the planning board and they wanted rezoned to industrial. I'll give an example of one. Uh, Trent Cole is an engineer, graduated from University of Massachusetts, is doing, was doing research on micro particles and how you measure them. And he was going to construct industrial, uh, units to measure this. So, but it wasn't zoned for industry. So I said, this would be a good idea. And the planning board came up with the industrial zone for that particular area. So it was not spot zoning, but the whole area was industrial zone. We were hoping to get more incubator industries coming in. Well, they were incubated quite well and they moved out the quite successfully. So that's how this became an industrial zone as opposed to a business zone like most of Route Nine. If there are any other zoning questions, like Bill said, the, uh, the planning board will make a, their recommendation, but, uh, right now, I think if, if those people who are interested in something like this, we should get a group together to put out a request for proposal and it should become, go before the town meeting, not put the burden on three people on the zoning board of appeals. And, uh, Sunderland did exactly that. So, uh, there are options available to us.
Thank you. Thank you. It is public.
Now I have to speak. So based on what Molly Keegan said, the, the, the Select Board, they, they're, the opinion of the Select Board is that we're concerned about the affordable housing number in town. And we're at twelve and a half percent, yes, but in my opinion, the town itself did very little to get there. We got it stuffed down our throat through an unfriendly forty B. And we're trying to avoid that in the future. We don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, five years down the road. But my personal opinion is we've got a property on Route Nine that can be rehabilitated for this purpose. And it will save us potentially down the road from an unfriendly forty B, which is not limited to Route Nine. An unfriendly forty B can happen anyplace in town. And so we, we are just concerned about that aspect and that's why the Select Board is in favor of it.
Thank you.
So the Select Board provided a letter of support as well. I don't know if we want to read it into record.
Okay. I can, I'll be the Select Board. This is the, uh, as, as part of the forty B process, what actually brings the, the, uh, among the other requirements, some of the requirements, what kicks off this process and brings it to the ZBA is the, the Select Board has to issue a, a letter of interest to the applicant. So this is the letter of interest that the Select Board issued on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Project eligibility letter application for three twenty-nine Russell Street. Now, dear Ms. Razor and Ms. Crowley Walkdale, on behalf of the town of Hadley Select Board, I am pleased to submit this letter of support for the project eligibility letter application from Valley Community Development for redevelopment of the Econo Lodge at three twenty-nine Russell Street in Hadley. Valley proposes to convert the existing hotel into fifty affordable apartments with supportive services. Hadley currently has twelve point five nine percent of its housing stock classified as affordable on the DHCD, subsidize housing inventory and developing a variety of housing options is a long-term goal recognized in the most recent master plan update. The Econo Lodge sits in the heart of the commercial slash industrial zone in Hadley, surrounded by dozens of retail establishments, employing hundreds of entry-level workers. The proposed apartments will be affordable to workers who are essential to Hadley's employees, employers and within walking distance to many of these businesses. The site is transit-friendly and a great location for tenants who may not own a car. It is located on the most frequently traveled bus route in our region and adjacent to a well-used rail trail. As an operational hotel, it has adequate parking and infrastructure already in place. In addition to discussions with the Select Board, Valley staff met with Hadley's Economic, Hadley's Housing and Economic Development Committee. This committee voted in support of the project. Hadley has additional committees working to increase housing opportunity and advance equity such as the Housing Production Plan and the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Consistent with the master plan update, Hadley is requesting a preference for local residents when these apartments become available. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Jane Devens. With Select Board Chair.
Dee DeBrinze and I'm with the Building Department. Um, we have spoken with Laura before on, uh, our project coordinating meeting. Um, I guess mostly our concern is, is that, um, as far as our jobs are life safety and we deal with the police and fire also. And because of our staffing right now, our concern is having, um, going from a hotel to apartments, having the kitchens, things like that. We have a lot of calls many days from Vesta, especially because of smoke detectors going off, things like that, where it's using up our safety resources. And so that is one of our big concerns right now is not having enough staff to, you know, take on something else like this at the moment. I think that's why it is something that would really need to be worked on as far as, especially staffing. Because it is an ongoing thing. We, you know, deal with these things a lot with apartment complexes. So that is one of our big concerns.
Thank you. Just, um, in regard to what Dee was just speaking to, David, do you want to, do you want to address that with your information there? Public reference. Okay, okay. So if, if there, is there anyone else on, on a board or committee in town that would like to speak? Okay, so hearing, uh, hearing no one else, we'll have. We'll get to you.
Okay, so one of the biggest concerns I've heard is police, fire and ambulance resource strains. So what I did is a public records request for five different little, uh, hotel locations from the Hadley Police Department from January first, twenty twenty through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And basically I got all the police, fire and ambulance calls for those locations. I went through and I crossed out, you know, traffic stops, disabled vehicles, motor vehicle accidents, impounds, erratic driving, roadway hazards, things like that. Because for example, if there's an accident in front of Howard Johnson's on Route Nine, it's logged in the police call log as happening on Howard Johnson's. So it's impossible to differentiate whether it actually happened at the hotel or in the roadway in front. Uh, same with neighborhood checks, property checks, business checks, park and walkthroughs. Those are similar where, you know, an officer may park his car in the parking lot, walk through a hotel. It could be because there's a problem there. It could be because he just decided that's a good place to patrol. It could be requested at the request of the business owner. So those are some of the ones that I eliminated just because it's hard to say whether it's because of a problem or it's preventative. Um, I've got the number of rooms for each of these hotels from records at Town Hall and then also called the front desks where, where available. Obviously Econo Lodge is closed, so couldn't talk to anybody at the front desk there. But got the, uh, the number of rooms at the time from Town Hall records. So the hotels that I looked at was Hampton Inn, twenty-four Bay Road. During this time, there were seventy-two calls. There are seventy-two rooms at the hotel that are in use. That equals one call per room on average. There has been no known use of this hotel during the time period for homeless, low income or temporary COVID shelters. Next was Knights Inn, two oh eight Russell Street. Next was Knights Inn, two oh eight Russell Street. There were ninety nine calls at that hotel. There are eighteen rooms in that hotel, which is five point five calls per room. This and Howard Johnson's was shall get to are probably the closest where there were long term homeless or low income individuals living in these locations. For Knights Inn, Craig's Doors homeless program was there. And based on calling the front desk, they really don't rent retail rooms to customers off the street. It's all subsidized. It's all homeless. It's all long term people living there, basically. Next one was Econo Lodge, three twenty nine Russell Street. During this time period, there were seventy nine calls, sixty three rooms is what they had available according to town records. One point two five, two five four calls per room. It was used for homeless and low income. They did use it for a COVID positive first responder temporary lodging early in the COVID pandemic. And obviously, there's no further data now because the hotel's not actually operating. Next is the Comfort Inn, which was formerly the Holiday Inn, four hundred Russell Street. There were sixty three calls and a hundred rooms. Point six three zero calls per room. No known use for homeless, low income, or temporary COVID shelters. Based on calling the front desk, most of their customers are off the street retail rates, such as business travelers, vacationers, people seeing new masks, things like that. The last one is Howard Johnson's, four oh one Russell Street. A hundred and ninety calls, there's a hundred and four rooms there, one point eight two seven calls per room. Most of this hotel is homeless and low income extended stay. Most of their rooms are rented on a weekly or monthly basis, generally to very low income individuals. Based on calling the front desk, very few customers are retail customers, like I mentioned, business travelers, vacationers, things along those lines. Also, according to the front desk person I spoke with, generally, there's not a hundred rooms available. Even though they have a hundred rooms, they rent typically about half of that. So I didn't take that into account because it's hard to say how many rooms are available on a particular night. So I just wanted to compare the number of police calls, for example, compared to Hampton Inn, compared to Knights Inn. You're talking about a four hundred percent increase in police, police, fire, and ambulance resources. If you compare Knights Inn to, it would be Comfort Inn. You're talking about a six hundred and ninety three percent increase in police, fire, and medical calls. And what's associated with that? Speaking to Chief Mason, he said Knights Inn and Howard Johnson's, the severity of the crimes are much worse. Assault and battery. Knights Inn has had several several instances where tasers have been deployed, fights, et cetera. And all of these calls are listed in public records. Anybody can get a hold of them and everything's listed. You know, anything from suspicious activity, you know, noise complaints, assault and battery, domestic violence, on and on. So the idea that there's no increase in nine one one calls based on a standard hotel is is just false. So I just wanted to put that information out there. Thank you.
Mr. DeCavitz.
Randy.
I hope this. With great interest, what doctors are running.
So the people, so people online can hear you.
I listened with great interest to what Dr. Zagradic had to say about forty B and the triggers and the right to reject. I also heard about the the different levels or percentages in our neighboring communities. That doesn't, this doesn't get Hadley off the hook. We're at twelve and a half. But it does it frees up North Hampton and Amherst. That's what I think it is. And I hope you listen to what everybody has to say, the tough job that you have. But you have the safe harbor, the right to reject. I would hope you consider that. Thank you.
Randy, do you want to say something?
I want to ask Mr. Phil a question regarding whether he knows about the people that are staying at the Knights Inn, whether they're wholly subsidized or are they actually participating in paying their rent? So I think that would make a difference.
So I asked that question, they refuse to provide the answer. It's like they don't give income or customer. So I asked that for all the patients, whether they're paying.
Laura, you I mean, you really got programmed. Do you know how that?
Yeah, so well, two comments. One is that part of the reason the Econo Lodge came to our attention was that it was rented by Craig Stores during the pandemic. They rented the whole first floor. And when we spoke around town to the different officials, it didn't raise any red flags that we heard from them about it being a problem. And that kind of caught our attention. The Knights Inn briefly served, I don't know for how many months, it served as a homeless shelter. We don't have a lot of information about that. One thing I would just say is that a homeless shelter is different than permanent housing. And so I'm not trying to whitewash it, but it is a different level of staffing. It is a different level of permanence of population than you might have at a shelter. We also did a similar pu- public record search, as I mentioned, when we were proposing something in Amherst. And I think we came in around two calls per person per year. So again, kind of somewhere in the area of what you were saying about, which was at the the Howard Johnson's. So seeing seeing a bump from a typical population, but we did not see anything consistent with the five point five calls per year at any of our properties. We saw something between one and two point five per person per year. And these are properties that didn't have any any staff there. We did a really detailed analysis of the nature of those calls and would be happy to provide that to the ZBA because we think it's a good comparable. It is, in fact, housing similar folks. And we've been doing it for a long time and we have a lot of data about that. And we really did not see the severity, like you're talking about the assault and battery. We saw a lot of medical calls. We saw a lot of kind of small noise complaints, things of that nature when we went through those records. Be happy to share that analysis with the board. Just also, interestingly, I was the one who wrote the proposal for the property in Sunderland. And I will tell you that the town invested, I think between three and four hundred thousand dollars into that project. So because they bought the land, they paid for due diligence on the land, they put CPA money into it, and then they were able to attract a developer. And do you know how many proposals they got? One. One proposal for the senior housing in Sunderland. No, I wrote the only one they got. I was there. So they only got one proposal. So my only point is it's it's not easy to cite and fund and develop affordable housing. And municipalities really struggle with the challenge of doing that.
But that proposal, they had a litany of things they wanted to be done.
Yes.
And that proposal did everything.
Right, thank you. So but, you know, they had to invest town money, which we're not talking about here today. We're talking a lot about financial cost, but we haven't talked about the cost of the town setting the table to do its own affordable housing or attract a developer to do the kind of affordable housing at once.
Affordable housing trust fund that we are able to
Great.
To do something like that.
That's excellent.
Choices.
Yep. I think that's excellent. I'm happy to hear it. I think all the towns should be trying to promote affordable housing. It takes person power, it takes property, it takes a lot of money. So I'm if you have resources, I think that's wonderful.
Peter Matusko, nineteen L Street. I'm still concerned about the vetting, knowing of a lot of the whatever the percentage calls was with the the fire, the ambulance, and the police, you know, misuse of pulling the fire stations. People smell smoke and they pull the fire line. How many of the uses of the public services are we going to be using? That's that's one big concern. And how are you vetting them? Are you doing the full, okay? Okay, well, there was a Mr. Mayor, there was a break in, there was a little bit of assault and battery. How tight are you going with the vetting of these things, knowing it's in the center of, well, not in the center of town, but where it is, where all these people and the concern of not that very far away, we're having sidewalks going everywhere. Everybody is now walking distance and the concern of all the people around the area. We are above the quota of the ten percent. So why are we pushing more if we're at twelve to pushing more when everybody has been saying, why aren't the other towns doing their part? Is it just convenience because we're in the center of town? And my other question is, is what happens after so many inconvenience phone calls, all the money being used? And say, this is just not beneficial, not relief to the town because we're not collecting any taxes on this for the property that's not going to be used. When's it to the point where someone says, you know what? It's not working out. Too many services being used, phone, ambulance, fire, police, to the point where if this doesn't work, what are you going to do? Are you going to say, okay, one, two, three, four, five complaints? And then you finally get someone out? Or you just say, okay, after the first or the second complaint, to keep things safer for everybody? You know, with the vetting process, how many are you going to be with these people as to the uses of all of our services? And I guess my other question is, is the person that sold us to you, what happens if this doesn't work? Can this go back to a hotel? And if not, then I I guess the question is, is how can someone that's selling a hotel, which is tax benefits to the town, can actually say you can't make another hotel with competitive businesses and other hotels? How can they actually do that and say, no more other hotels? That's to me like a monopoly. How can you not say to somebody, you can't put another hotel there because it's against my own business? So I got concerned about that, too.
So that did want to non compete when selling the hotel because the seller owns other hotels in Hadley. I think the point Molly might have been trying to make is there's no, you can't make someone continue to run a business if they decide not to. So we've heard that there's another hotel in town, for example, that might be converted to an office use. And it would have the same impact on lodging tax revenue. So to be clear, we will pay taxes. So we will pay real estate taxes according to the assessed value of the property. So all of our properties pay real estate taxes. We're not a public housing authority, which is when you're on public land and you're tax exempt. We're taxable, so we would pay taxes. We're budgeting to pay taxes. We're budgeting the amount that they're paying now because that's a good starting number for us. It's the same, but it's different than the lodging taxes. So you have two kinds of taxes coming from the property, real estate taxes on the value of the property, and then a very particular kind of tax because it's a lodging. But or, you know, restaurants give you meals tax plus real estate taxes. But there's no guarantee that anyone has to continue to use this property as a hotel. You can't require them to. And so I think it's, is it the Howard Johnson's that's under review for conversion to an office facility? They won't pay lodging taxes because they're not a lodging. They won't pay meal taxes because they're not a restaurant. They'll continue to pay real estate taxes. And I would be really interested to provide more information to the public and to this committee about actual data, call data from our other properties. I think it would provide some comfort to to see that data come in. We really identified almost, I don't think I found any instances in our records of violent crime. I mean, I found medical stuff. I found people complaining with about trespass. I found a number of things, but I didn't find any, I found very few calls from neighbors. And, I mean, there were like a handful. Most of what happens for folks is they have a conflict with someone else living in the same property. They call the police. And really, the reason we want to staff it is because that's not an appropriate use of the police force. They don't need the police to come. They need someone to assist them, mediate that conflict or find something that's lost or the elevator's broken and they need someone to call for maintenance on that. So we think we can dramatically decrease those nine one one calls by having staff. And I think if you call around to other police departments where there is this kind of property, they might tell you a similar tale. I I interviewed the police chief in North Hampton and asked her, Chief Casper, like, what can we do as landlords to reduce your call volume? And she said, it's all about staff. Because then there's someone there to triage that all the minutia of problems that people might call nine one one for. The Amherst Campus Police said they have kids call if they want to know the time. So all of us, you know, folks who have family members to call or other resources, we don't call the police all the time, right? We call someone we know, a trusted other person. We look things up on Google. I mean, some folks don't have those resources and they end up using nine one one in inappropriate ways. And we don't want to prevent someone from getting like an ambulance to come if they have a medical problem. But we do want to stop the nine one one calls that really could be solved by having appropriate staffing on site. I would also mention that it there are homeless people living in Hadley. They're camped out in Hadley. And there are a lot of people working in Hadley who would like to live here, who cannot afford it. And I do think, aside from money and police and fire and everything, there's something to be said for that, for having housing that matches the people who are you're you're requiring because you need them to work in the services in your town. Anyway, I'll stop.
Sure. Very good you are.
Yeah.
The concern about vetting.
Yeah.
I guess is that the demand for what we are operating
Yeah.
Way outstripped the supply.
It will.
You ought to be able to pick the cream of the crop, at least for the first and then probably into perpetuity if it is that long because, again, the demand will be incredible.
Yes, we will have no shortage of applicants. So typically, that's right. Typically, a lease up at a property like this will see maybe as many as ten applicants for every apartment. We can select people. We can't violate fair housing law. So we can't screen out people because of their source of income or their race or their anything like that. But we can still make good judgments as landlords because we don't want to have problems in our building. Like, we're trying to create a safe place for people to live. If someone is unsafe, you know who they're going to be unsafe for first? It's not the charter school down the road. It's going to be the other people in the building. We feel very strongly that a lot of the folks that we house have not been in safe situations in the past. And we need to create a safe harbor for people. And then they can do better than they're doing now. So we do have written information about the tenant screening process that I could provide to the board and the board could. Do you have a website or anything where you post stuff or will we? Okay. If we were to continue the hearing as as because, which I would be welcoming because I'm hearing a lot of questions and a lot of people I'm seeing for the first time. And so it's a lot of information to go over. Not everybody was at the all the board meetings we went to before, but we could bring a sample application, we could bring kind of how we look at query records, we could bring our tenant selection plan. It's like we have systems in place, we could share them with you. You could like them or not, but it's not arbitrary.
The other town that were below their quota was those town voted out said, no, we don't want you to. Because why wouldn't you have North Hampton and Amherst that are below their quota?
Sure.
The percentages where I know it's convenient to have a tiny, narrow hotel that's abandoned, but.
Right. So both North Hampton and Amherst are over ten percent. So the property that we just permitted a few years ago in Amherst was controversial. And the town permitted it anyway, even though they were at ten percent because they had identified a need for housing for homeless individuals in their town. That was a priority for them. We went there. Not everyone agreed, right? But enough people agreed that they wanted to see that happen. North Hampton is also over ten percent. And I would point out they're much larger communities. So that ten or eleven or twelve percent is thousands of units, not hundreds of units. So it's a different order of magnitude. I have done multiple forty Bs in towns like you're talking about Sunderland, Goshen, where it's under ten percent. And those, you know, same process that we go through. Some people like it, some people don't. Even when it's a friendly forty B, the Sunderland project, we had multiple appeals on that project from and about her. So it's never just smooth, like everybody agrees. It's there's always. It's, there's always some controversy around something that we do, so.
Is the, is the, the composition of, of the tenants in this, in the, in this project, is it, is identical? Like, is it not a different project than what you currently run in other places? Like, is it, is this the same type of like mix of tenants, mix of units and things like that?
It is. So, you know, there are folks in the county who are advocates, who recognize that we have a homeless basically crisis. More and more people on the streets and would love to have seen us develop this as 100% homeless housing. Champion that. We believe both because of the location, because it's near so many employment opportunities for low wage workers. And we think it's a healthier social ecosystem when people, you know, some people go to work, some people don't. Some people are retired, some people are, you know, in school. I mean, having the variety of people, gender, income, background, occupation is a healthier place to live. Instead of having everybody be coming from a homeless background.
Well, I would say, yeah, how many veterans are in my group? And I would imagine for those applicants, having more veterans than those that are most likely wanting to be homeless?
We, there, there are certainly a lot of vets needing housing. Do you know, Alex, how many vets? We can find out. I mean, there are some, we, we don't have any properties that are set up exclusively for vets. So they're just coming in as other applicants would come in. There is a kind of housing voucher called VASH that if you put that in an apartment, then it only can be reserved for veterans who need it. But we do see veterans, obviously, in our applicant pool. We see people, all kinds of people. I mean, I think you'd be surprised.
My name's Tony Biden Cole Spring Lane. I'd just like to suggest that the, that the zoning board voted against this tonight. I think it's the wrong project at the wrong time. We have an opportunity here because we're at 12.6 or 12.5% that we can be deliberative about this. We can think about this, take our time and do it right. And as, as we could tailor requests for proposals, and if we got one, it would meet those, it would meet those specifications. So we could do a much better job of it than, than we're doing here. I don't think we should be frightened into this. I'm hearing from some of the select board members, you know, what if, what if, you know, what if these drop offs? What if this happens? Well, we, that's not the way we should respond and to kind of be frightened into making something that may not be right. Excuse me. The, the fact is that Hadley is the envy of other communities in Western Massachusetts because people talk about it all the time. We have low taxes, good schools, good services. We do that because we have a business district on Route 9 that has been carefully managed by the planning board, by the zoning board over decades to, so that all this development that has taken place on Route 9 has really paved the way. The rest of the town that a lot of people don't even know about is, is farms, it's houses, it's a quiet community. That's been something that's been highly successful that other communities have not had the opportunity to do. To do something like this is a dramatic shift. We have, we have rules, we have zoning that says no apartments for, for a reason. Because we want to, we want to keep business on Route 9. We want to have that and it's changed over the time. We've had malls, we've had different businesses come and go, but we've always been able to kind of change with the times and have that be a successful formula. To do this, I don't see, once this happened, what is to stop it from happening to another apartment? We would have not really a, I suppose it's case by case. We could say, we're saying yes to this, we're saying no to that, but they could also sue us for saying no when we said yes for, you know, the, I, I, I think it opens, it opens the door to a major change in, in Route 9. If that's what we want to do, fine, but let's take our time and think about it. Let's, let's plan this out. And if we're going to change Route 9, let's not do it by, out of fear and saying, we're opening this up and I, I don't think that's the way to respond. Just a couple of quick points. One more point is that one of the components for this is community input. And I know that the, that valley has gone around to different boards, but this is really the first opportunity for a lot of us to, to actually look at this and, and speak about it. Some of the, we have a, we have a town meeting process. The, the select board is, is just a, you know, we don't have a mayor and a town council. We have different boards and we have a town meeting. I don't think a lot of people know about this or have had an opportunity to really examine this. And even the select board, it was not a unanimous vote. It was, it was, I believe, three, three to one with one abstention. It was, so it was, there's, there was a lot of support, but that was not unanimous. That was a, not, not a clear decision at all. So I would say reject this and let's do it right. Thank you.
It is often our experience that this point in time, the first opening of the hearing of the zoning board of appeals is when people become aware of the project and come with questions. We do a presentation. Often there are continuances because, because of the nature of that, it being the first time that people are hearing about it. I, I would just suggest that Route 9 is changing already. That the nature of retail and bricks and mortar is shifting. And so we're seeing all up and down the valley conversions. We're, we're working on the North Hampton nursing home because it's been vacant for 12 years and converting it to apartments. There are commercial venues being converted to housing because we have this glut of retail space. And so as you're saying, you know, Hadley's been able to manage and shift with the times. There is a change in the way people buy things. And so I think reusing something that there isn't as much demand for into something that there's tremendous demand for is a smart choice. I, I think we're going to see more and more of it. I think we're going to see more and more types of built environment converted into housing just because that's where the pressure is in the marketplace.
You have hand up online or do you want to say something, Rich?
My hand is up. I, I, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah, you, you can go ahead, Felicity.
Oh, thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. Sorry, my, my camera's not working for some reason. It was working a few minutes ago and it stopped. So it might be I have poor bandwidth. I just wanted to point out that one of the advantages to the, to Hadley with respect to this particular project is that this site is completely developed. So in, in, in redeveloping a, a, a project that's already there preserves the opportunity for the town of Hadley to keep its beautiful open spaces, keep its agricultural and, you know, village center areas without the prospect of having somebody come in later with an affordable housing project that might propose to redevelop areas that are already open now. So I think the board ought to be thinking about the fact that, you know, you have a hotel there now. We're not really changing anything that's in, in terms of the site. And there's really, I think, a pretty significant advantage to the town reusing it in this way. And thank you for taking my comment.
Hi, Richard Witoz from 20 Chattock Road. So I just wanted to, you know, voice my opinion, you know, this is my first meeting here and learning a lot about this process and learning a lot about what this all means. But, you know, I will agree that at this meeting, we should not, you know, this should not go through at this point. Because again, you know, I agree with a lot of the people that have come up, a lot of fellow town citizens and said, you know, I'm learning about this today. This is my first time. I don't, I, I also understand that we're above the threshold, which is the 10%. I don't want to get into a situation that we're below the threshold because it sounds like that's not a good place to be in either. But I do know that planning for something to, you know, to give us time to think about it and then present it to the town citizens at a town meeting would make more sense. Because honestly, if somebody, you know, didn't come to me and say, hey, this is coming up today, I probably wouldn't have been here and I wouldn't have known. Or maybe if this goes through, I would have been pretty upset. So I just want to make, you know, on record that I think that this should not go through and I think that we should come back, you know, learn more about this process, learn about what type of projects we could develop to, to be compliant moving forward and then let the town decide who and where those are going to go. But yes, we shouldn't go under the 10% because then it's going, it sounds like it's going to be forced upon us. But it sounds like we have time. So we shouldn't move forward with something right now that is our only option. Just my thought.
Hi, I'm Alinda Nielsen, 20 Middle Street. So just for my clarity, it sounds like the town is not going to have to put any money into this. The town has not been asked for any money for this. Now that the general back here is telling me to have a pot of money, maybe ask for some. But no, we didn't design it to rely on, on your services. Okay. So there's the question of taxes. Can a reasonable estimate be made? Like you said, we, we planned or we budgeted or refunded, but taxes don't work like, well, we're the taxpayer. We planned what we're going to pay. It doesn't work like that. So is there a way to make an estimate so people know what the comparison would be? Yeah. And I know a homeless person who has been in the system and used, you know, all the different resources who would rather camp in a tent in the snow than go to Knights Inn because everybody's druggies there. I mean, I don't know, but this is what he says, everybody's druggies there. He'd have to be in a room with somebody else and he couldn't leave any of his stuff because it would get stolen. So can you please review why the people who would be in your apartment building are not going to be that kind of person? Because we have just been kind of drawn, driven into Knights Inn and just kind of like eyeballed, like what is this that is in our town? And it is not pretty. Thank you.
So first on the tax question, we picked up the current tax rate as, as a baseline. We said, what are they paying now? Let's carry that as a budget number. We could certainly, if they were willing, meet with the assessors because they will establish the value of the property. And they'll look at really the revenue and expenses and the cash flow of the property and they'll back out a value for the property. Will it be higher? Will it be lower? That's a conversation we'll have with them. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. So I don't know what's happening at the Knights Inn. Knights Inn is no longer occupied by Craig Stores. They moved out in October. So I have no idea who's staying at the Knights Inn. It seems to be right now, it's just a hotel. So it's not being rented by any group serving homeless people. It's, it's a hotel. So I don't. When it was, okay, okay. Yeah. Right. Right. So two perspectives. One is from the, the person you know who would prefer to sleep outside to going into a congregate shelter. So most shelters are congregate. People are in a room together. You can't leave your stuff overnight. You have to go somewhere else during the day. You're with other people. It can be loud, it can be noisy, it can be very stressful, especially if you have any kind of mental health stuff going on. It can be very stressful. Right. 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 We're looking to do something that is safe and secure. So it's an apartment, you have a key, it's locked, there's cameras in the hallway. There is staff on site so that it's not a free for all. There's not people getting into your room and taking your things. We don't really have that happening at any of our properties. But a lot of people don't want to go into shelters because they're afraid of the situation that you're describing. We don't want to own and manage anything that sounds like what you're describing. We don't own and manage anything that sounds like what you're describing. So again, I keep harping back to this, you know, screening tenants, having staff on site. I mean, to us, those, those are the things that we need to do to keep the environment safe so that people won't be like, oh, I don't want to stay at that place. You know, that's creepy there. We, we, we don't want that either.
The concern I have is that I feel like the town is being backed into a corner that what's the other possible use for this building other than converting it to apartment? Like the previous owner wrote it into the, you know, the non-compete that it couldn't be used as a hotel. You know, what do we do with this building? But that being said, I think, taking into what you guys have planned to do, what if that further along what Mr. Witoz said is that there are potential other options and potential other things that it could be used instead of kind of just saying, well, we have to do this because there's nothing else we can do. And I feel like, you know, the consensus this evening is like residents feel a little bit rushed into this and that like we're at this stage now. Like you said, this has been a process ongoing, but a lot of people see like this, this is happening tonight. And what it is, and like I brought up the Chinese immersion school, you know, two doors down from here. Like they, they have been looking and have expanded and have been looking to expand as well, like they're growing school. Perhaps this could be a building that they could have used. Yeah, I just, I just feel like, you know, we're, we're kind of backed into a corner here that it's, it this or then, then what? It just falls into dilapidation and, and you know, there's no other possible use for the building.
Well, it's kind of solving for a problem that didn't exist, right? It was a ongoing hotel. It wasn't, it's not abandoned, it wasn't an abandoned building.
No.
The hotel is sold and then they put a restriction on it that it can't be used as a hotel anymore. And then it's like, well, we have to find another use for the building, but it wasn't really a problem before it was sold with the deed restriction.
What sparked a lot of the hotel changes in the hotel world was the pandemic. You know, just that the hotels, the Kona Lodge is rated as a two-star hotel. So the hotels that weren't profitable in the way that some of the other hotels are in Hadley are the kind of, they're the runt of the litter and the first to be cast off for more profitable locations is my, my impression. I would, it's very rare that we go to a 40B hearing that takes place in one night. You all have 180 days to make a decision. I cannot tell you what to do, but based on the number of people here tonight and the questions and comments and back and forth and requests for information, to me, it sounds like you have every right to continue the hearing. And then we can provide more information. We can speak to some of the concerns that people have raised. And a 40B is always by definition, kind of a negotiated process with the community. The reason we call it a friendly 40B is that we have the support of the municipality in this, in the sense of the select board and some other boards that have written letters. Not that everybody loves it. That's why it's called friendly.
And like, I mean, we all drive on the Route 9 border. We see, you know, people panhandling, begging on the street. I think also a concern of mine would be that an increase in that kind of foot traffic. I mean, it's unsafe to begin with on a median which clearly states no trespassing on it. And there's people on that begging, panhandling. I would be concerned that, you know, if a lot of people coming here are, you know, either not reliably employed or, you know, rely on social services, that it may not be enough that then we could be inadvertently increasing our homeless or, excuse me, not homeless, panhandling, begging, kind of presence along that already busy and dangerous corridor.
They're already here.
I also think we need to be clear about the definition of the people that would be living in here as well. I myself get confused and I find myself falling back into, you know, kind of, you know, temporary housing or, I mean, like the way you described it from what Ms. Nielsen described is that, you know, these are homes, not temporary housing.
Right. It's a pretty important distinction. You know, again, this also begs me to want to come back and talk to you all because there's a, a large category, there are many categories of people who qualify as homeless. And it could be anybody. I mean, some of them are people displaced by natural disaster. You know, people who have unsafe housing, people who have violence in their housing, people who need a wheelchair accessible unit and they don't have one. I mean, lots of people that we could probably all say, yeah, these are people we want to help. So it's a broader category than the guy that you saw at the median by the, by the, you know, by the malls. the guy that you saw at the median by the by the, you know, by the malls. I mean, we see that panhandling and housing aren't necessarily overlapping populations. So some people panhandle who have housing. Some people panhandle who are homeless. Some people are homeless would never be caught dead panhandling. It's it's not necessarily you have one and then you have the other. But you definitely already have. I mean, this is the thing. It's it's these issues are here with us in our society. They're here with us in Hadley and are going to have more or less of it if we provide people safe, good quality housing services. Our notion is you reduce the number of people that are milling about on the street because they have a safe place to be.
Yes, David. Yeah, please.
Right. I guess Doc Z make a question about the ratio.
So Doc Z, you probably know this the best. So worst case with our current housing ratio of twelve and a half percent. Is it going to be five to six years before we would fall below threshold? Or
I I did some calculations a couple of a year and a half ago, we'd have to build twelve houses uh a year in order to go beyond the 10% threshold. And it was depending on what houses come off the affordability chart. And the one we're talking of is Mountain Mountain View where the old Pizza Hut was, the dot in the locks. And that was supposed to get a five year extension because we repaired the water line that was broken there and uh we only got three. So the old town manager didn't negotiate what what we thought we were going to get. So I would probably say it's below, you can't be low at the 10% threshold. Uh, probably about eight years, 10 years, put that number. But now if somebody's coming off the uh the affordability and they want to go market rate, we have affordable housing trust fund, that CPA money plus the affordable housing trust fund that we don't know how to spend it. But if I give it to you and say, don't come off the affordability, you'll say, please, I'll take that and I'll I'll continue the affordable housing rather than go market rate. So there are other options available to the town and the wolf is not at our door just yet. But the question is about uh which which ones are coming off and when they're coming off and and looks like there's plenty of money out there for developers. So I don't think the wolf is out our door yet. We don't have to make that decision.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, I guess, is we're told we have to do this. We're worried about this percentage, but the reality is there is no urgency here. We're talking about five, eight years, you know, worst case scenario. If that court case doesn't turn out, I guess you could say in our favor before we have to do something. So I would urge you to reject it and let's go about this through the town meeting process and let's see what we can do with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund rather than a very select few on a few committees pushing this through. Thank you.
Ms. Nielsen.
Um, so am I understanding that it's best for us if uh affordable housing is affordable in perpetuity? We we want it to never become unaffordable?
They used to be 10 years, they're 20 years now. I see it's 30 years, but the state is demanding that it would be affordable. Suddenly negotiated in perpetuity. So who will that come off?
And that is to our advantage. That's what we want. If we're going to do something, maybe this, maybe not. Maybe we put out an RFP and we get
Well, we want votes from this type of meeting every two years, five years, 10 years. That's that'd be it.
Okay. And so you were saying something about some towns have said it's got to be in perpetuity or it's got to be 99 years or whatever. And that can that be done with this project? Okay.
Thank you.
You know, again, that's always that's a common point of negotiation with the community because community is saying, well, you know, if you're going to do this, we want it to stay on our subsidized housing inventory for X number of years.
Couple of things. Uh, you mentioned you feel like you're backed into a corner, but you're not. You have the the decision making power to decide where this goes. You have negotiating power with the applicant to make this happen into perpetuity, whatever you guys decide is appropriate, if you decide it's appropriate. Um, as far as the use, the the building, they bought it. It can't be a hotel. Is there a time limit on that? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay, let's say there there's no time limit on it. So if this doesn't happen for them, they're more than likely going to sell the building to somebody who can put a business in there. If it's not a hotel, it's just going to generate real estate taxes, just like it will be when they own it. So and one last thing is this housing trust fund with all this money in it, I believe right now we are at three or $400,000. Joe, do you know? Okay, $400,000. That's going nowhere to 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 create any kind of affordable housing. So just keep that in mind, please.
Randy's referring to the shocking cost of construction and what it costs to create a new unit of affordable housing in Massachusetts, which is now running between five and $600,000 statewide. So it's true. Most towns use their money as kind of a carrot, but they can't afford to build or actually create affordable housing because it's so expensive.
But to your point, Randy, and to the data that David presented is like, yes, if if this isn't used to convert into apartments, if we used for a business of some sort, which then we don't have the overhead and the extra uh calls on fire and police that are going to come at a significant increase with housing 63 unrelated people in one building. Potential, excuse me. You're right. Um. I just, I I struggle to see the benefits for the town of Hadley. I understand that for people to live in our wonderful community, it's a it's a it's a great luxury and a pleasure. And I mean, it's it's something that as someone pointed out earlier, that, you know, we've taken great care and cultivating and growing. And I think um you know, we're here for the, you know, for definitely what everybody in the community wants, but also what's for the best of town of Hadley. And I'm struggling to see with the points that have been made this evening as to how this project being moving forward presented as it is would benefit the residents of Hadley. There's been no provisions given for preferential placement for seniors in Hadley. There's been no preferential placement given for um itinerant or homeless people in Hadley. Um, and as Ms. Nielsen said, you know, if you build it, they'll come. I just worry that we might be bringing in more problems than we can absorb or handle. Molly, you give your hand up?
Uh, yeah, but just um just to to Jason's point about about, you know, some of the information that's presented tonight. The Chief of Police, Mike Mason, did say that if if indeed there's a continuation, um, if that's the pleasure of of the ZBA, that you want to continue it. Um, so that answers to questions that were posed by the Finance Committee, for example, can be answered at a future meeting. Um, if there can be clarification on any public safety concerns, I just wanted to let you know that he did indicate that he would be happy to be present at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Um, this is Town Council again. I I just want to remind the board, you actually are going to have to continue it because if you vote to invoke your safe harbor, we have to send a letter to DHCD. The letter would say that you would, based upon your safe harbor, you would have the right to either that you may deny or you may impose conditions. Um, and then you would have to have DHCD affirm that letter before you could actually take that next vote. So regardless, you're going to have to continue the meeting um to a date and time certain. To the applicant's point, you do absolutely have 180 days, which is not until August. I'm not suggesting you go until August, obviously. Um, but that um it it would be highly unusual for a 40 B application to be um open and closed in one night. And you can't, if you're going to exercise your right of safe harbor, close the hearing tonight. You would have to continue it. Um, I would also just want to point out one other thing that you you're talking about your subsidized housing inventory, just to be clear. The subsidized housing inventory is calculated um on a 10 year basis by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, based upon the decennial census. Um, sadly, uh, the 2020 decennial census numbers have yet to be incorporated into the subsidized housing inventory numbers uh for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And therefore you're looking at a number based upon your market rate housing units as of 2020. So um the 12 and a half percent, while that is what the number is today, if your 2020 um uh uh census were included in that, um, you may or may not fall below the 10%, notwithstanding the status of your other housing units. And I just wanted to make that clear, just so everybody was operating off of the same facts. Um, it's likely that DHCD will not be having those numbers until mid to the end of this year.
Lisa, that's the 20, is the 2010 number that we're using?
Yes, the 2010 number, excuse me. That's the 2010 number.
So we need to wait to get a 2020 number anyway?
You're, no, you don't. You can't. You don't get to wait. You're you're using the, my point is, is that the 12 and a half percent is based upon your housing stock as of 2010. And you get to add from 2010 to date, you they they add your affordable units to that number. But they haven't added all of the market rate units that have been constructed since 2010. So that calculation is going to change. The calculation is going to change when they actually add the last 10 years of housing that you've constructed.
How come all the other towns are older than us and we and you guys are coming after our town? If you want to be with neighbors, you want to be with people. But we feel like we're we're being, we have this thing for us now. We have time to think about it and with all due respect. And the other thing that's very upsetting, the other thing that's very upsetting, I take real offense to this racist stuff. We are not racist people here. And I've about had, I don't know who wrote this letter. But you know, my mother, back in the 60s, threw one of our friends out because she didn't like, she thought we're all bad people. We're all bad people. We're all one to her, one to her. I am so serious. This is the whole country. It's like, we're now we're being told that we're racist and you know, do this. Please stop this nonsense. We're all tired of it. Most of us. I'm not speaking for anybody else, but I'm speaking for a few members. Thank you. But I'll do a respect.
So um procedurally, it's not, I mean, we're not going to be able to uh, you know, reach a final conclusion tonight. Um, you know, I would, I would I would just kind of, I I mean, I this is an unusual hearing for our board. We're usually dealing with people wanting to put fences closer to property lines and things like that. Um, so I mean, I I I think I think some of the ideas that have been kicked around here make a lot of sense to me that it's, I understand that the state law puts it to the zoning board of appeals, but it seems like a weird way to decide housing policy in town to me. Um, that is, that it comes down to three of us. I know we're getting input from other boards. Um, it just I I, you know, I'll say anecdotally, I I haven't had, I haven't had any people in the public come up to me and say anything positive about this project. Um, people in the public who approached me have have said, have told me that they don't want the project in town. I know the Select Board's issued a letter of interest and I know, you know, the Diversity Committee is interested in it. And and, you know, planning boards because of the 10% number. So I understand that the boards are interested in this, but I I think it's interesting that I I haven't, I haven't heard any public support for it. Um, to the extent that that matters. Um, again, this is sort of a, we're typically evaluating things on this board with somewhat with an objective criteria of whether somebody has a hardship, whether they get a variance, whether they shouldn't have to follow our our zoning rules for some reason. Um, and this is sort of an odd one in that it's uh more or less like a political decision on on what's best for the town. In terms of like asking us to to waive the the no, no apartment rule in town and and the housing. So there's two things. It's no apartment rule, but there's also the housing in the industrial zone. Um, I mean, the zoning is there to protect all of us and we to to waive it when you're above the 10%, I think is, I mean, I understand that the process is there and you can do that, but there's something that that rubs me a little bit the wrong way of of not following the zoning rules when we're already above the 10%. Um, if people think we need to have a more diverse housing stock in town for with apartments or smaller units or, you know, it's just like when the the tiny houses came to our board. I think that's a that's a matter for for the town meeting to take up and for the planning board to take up with with changing the zoning bylaws to allow for some more lean, some more diverse housing options. Um. I I don't know. I just, this seems like a I understand why it feels to people like this is an odd way to do this project is, I guess, what I'm getting at. And I value, Value Development Corporation hasn't done anything wrong here. They're following a rule that's in place that the it's a state rule that is in place of how you can build this type of housing. So I'm not saying that anybody did anything wrong with bringing it forward this way. This is what the process is. Um. But it seems like it would make more sense to have more people in giving input into this through either town meeting or like we said, a request for proposal where where there's more more input going into it. And I I don't see the not that it's being done on an emergency basis tonight, but I think there's plenty of time to figure this out. The the best of property, from what I understand, at the earliest, we're coming off the rules in like 2032. Just like a lot could happen between now and 2032, but. Yeah, I mean, I think we have.
That's what's happened tonight.
It does.
And then you can get more after more input from other people, from other boards to get get the numbers you're after so to make sure that you understand exactly what what you're up against.
Yeah, I would say before we move like, Laura, is it Laura? Laura, thank you. Um, I think for next time, I think uh just going off of basically what I heard tonight is a a what I'd like from you is a better picture of 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 who will live here. Um, and the vetting application process, as Mr. Matusko um highlighted. Also, you said that something that kind of raised my eyebrow is that, you know, people go through Cory checks, but not everyone that doesn't pass a Cory check wouldn't be allowed to live there. I'd like to know what those thresholds are as well. Um, and definitely, as Ms. Keegan suggested, I would like to hear Chief Mason's input as well about how um his uh police officers can absorb any uh foreseeable increase in calls and perhaps even Chief Spankable as well. If we could get their input. So will I make a motion for continuation then?
So Mr. Chair, I I just, so you actually have to vote to send to to invoke safe harbor as a board, you have to vote. Somebody has to move to vote to invoke safe harbor and I'm authorized me to have that sent to DHCD and the applicant. Um, and then you can move to continue to a date and time certain.
So I'll make a motion right now to invoke safe harbor and authorize Town Council to send notification to DHCD. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I will also make a motion to continue um the hearing until a decided date or
We gotta pick a date.
Yeah, we have to pick a date.
Got to be a date certain.
A date certain.
Date and time certain.
I don't know how we
what's the typical, is it more than two weeks we give?
Not that week.
Um, given given that we need to hear back from DHCD, you might want it to go three or four weeks.
Uh, we'll do uh March 20th, 20th. Does that work for everybody?
I will accommodate your schedule.
All right. I make a motion to continue the hearing until March 20th, 2023. So as we can gather some more input and opinions. At 7:00 PM. Second motion. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much for everybody coming and your input.